Oh, maybe.
Did you get the Wi-Fi?
No, I actually, I think I didn't know, so that's good. The CO2.
City of Toronto.
That's good.
Okay.
Yep.
The password.
Kevin. All right, so we are recording, right? All right, so we are meeting, this is a regular meeting of the city council and WPCA. Today is Monday, December 6, 2021, it is now 6:32 PM, and we are in the city hall auditorium. Before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're going to jump right into item number one on the agenda this evening, public comment, in person only. I don't see anybody participating via Zoom, is there anybody that called in? Okay, I see that there are. Yeah, a couple of department heads as well, okay, so in person only, public comments, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public. Thank you, Councilor Oliver.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this time? You have a lot of family members out there. Item two, we'll go right into presentation on blight enforcement. This doesn't require a motion, this is just for an update and status. And is Ashley on the call? Okay. All right, that's fine, I'll walk through and actually Vic could probably help me walk through this memo as well. So that memo is, I believe it was attached to your agenda packet. As you can see, our blight enforcement officer, Ashley Clement, has been doing yeoman's work and bringing forward for investigation, a number of properties, as we receive a complaint, she follows up. After doing an inspection, makes a determination as to whether or not this qualifies as blighted property. If, if it is determined that it does, she immediately sends a notice of violation to the property owner, affording them two weeks to get the property into compliance.
Correct.
That notice of violation, once served, starts the first clock. If compliance is not accomplished within that two year, two week period of time, a follow-up notice of violation and a notice of citations or fines is sent out to that property owner. You'll find a lot of the details of the enforcement process in our ordinance book. But in this report, you'll see some of the significant, significant properties that she wanted to highlight for you, three of which ended up in a foreclosure action, which Attorney Michelle will discuss. But more importantly, attached to the report, you would see a summary of active enforcement cases, she has 57 active cases. Seven of those cases were sent to Corporation Counsel for follow-up, follow-up being litigation, or that next step towards litigation. There is pending one case for, no, excuse me, one case was scheduled for a hearing. For, for the blight task committee, I will tell you, the goal is always compliance. The goal is not to collect fines, it's not to take somebody's property. With every one of these properties, the first thing we say, is this a piece of property that will come into compliance? The goal is always compliance, and I think the win in this report is that since 2019, this blight enforcement officer has accomplished compliance with 123 of the complaints. When compliance is not possible, liens are filed, fines are collected, and to date, we have collected $109,550 in fines, including two houses, which went into foreclosure, and the city now owns those properties. So this is just, you know, a real quick update on the activity. For the new members, our blight enforcement committee is myself, Corporation Counsel, we have our building official, we have our land use official, our, our economic development official, fire marshal, we have a representative from the police department, we have the deputy director of the Torrington area health district, and whatever other experts that we need to call into this meeting or into the discussion, we bring in accordingly. But I'm, I'm really quite pleased with how this enforcement has been going since the council adopted the brand, that new ordinance back in 2018. Are there any questions on blight enforcement? The status of blight enforcement? Questions or concerns? Okay, good. I hope someday you'll be able to get a chance to meet Ashley, she's quite dynamic, loves doing this work, more than anything, loves bringing properties into compliance, so I think you'll like her a lot. All right, if there are no questions, we're going to move into item number three, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Corporation Council's recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And just for the, anybody on the, paying attention on Zoom, this is to accept the recommendation that the city seeks sealed bids to sell real estate known as 126 High Street, in accordance with Attorney Michelle's memo dated December 6, 2021. So I had a motion by Councilman Oliver and seconded by Councilwoman Rouette. Corporation Counsel, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Sure, I can speak to that, this is the, the first time that we will be asking for the council to act on a sale of property that we have obtained through foreclosure. This is, as the mayor pointed out earlier, there are, there were three foreclosures pending. Two have come to fruition. One has, the city has decided, or the various departments has decided that it might be beneficial for the city to, to keep the property, because it, it, I believe it abets some other property that the city owns. On another foreclosure, that has been stayed because the party, the owner has declared bankruptcy, and a bankruptcy will always trump the foreclosure, so we have to wait until that is completed. And this one, this foreclosure was completed back in, I believe it's July 21. And we gave the person some time to get the property cleaned out, but the city now owns it. And again, it's been thought by the various departments of the city that it's really not a piece of property, it's 126 High Street, it's not a piece that the city really wants to keep for any reason. So therefore, we're seeking approval to go out to bid for the sale of the property, and I, I would work with our purchasing agent, Penny Zuko, to come up with the language for the bid process, and we would establish whatever conditions we need to establish for the, for the legal ad that'll be publicized. Once those bids are received, it will then come back to the city council for a final approval for the sale, so, so that's where that stands, and if there's any question, can ask now, or you can give me a call, but that's what we're seeking approval of right now, thank you.
So questions or comments, concerns?
One question. I see that the first notice on that property was served, just, I want to just inform that it was served like three years ago, did you say that it was much longer process than that?
Can you hear her okay? I know the microphones are a little sensitive, could you?
Yes, so my question was, I see that the first notice for compliance on this property was served in 2018, and I thought I heard you mayor say that it was like a 26-year process or something, much longer than that? I just was curious what the, you give me a very short version of what the prior 23 years were.
Absolutely, so the prior administrations, and there were a number of them. You know, blight has always been very tricky, it's, it's, it's not a pleasant thing to have to exert, I think Owen Quinn was one mayor that took, heavy hand, you know, he had his dirty dozen, this property, I think, was one of his. And they, they just never got it to compliance, nor did they get it, you know, to this point. But after 26 years, and believe me, there was one neighbor in particular, who's been there that full 26 years, he really was just begging the city to follow through with this, so we're, again, never happy to take somebody's property from them. Fortunately, this wasn't a primary residence, this, this property owner actually lives in Canton, I believe.
Yes.
So this is, this, I will tell you, is the direct result of that new ordinance. And I, and I have to remind the council members, and for the new council members, that this new ordinance was actually worked on quite extensively by a summer intern during his college years. And so I, I always want to reflect on who, who helps us develop these policies, so that was Ben Lambert back in 2017, so from 2017 to 18 is when we really started getting heavy-handed. Yeah, imagine if those fines had been accruing since 2023, 26 years ago. Other questions on this?
I had a quick, quick question. When the contract is created, is there something in the contract where the city can refuse the final bid?
Yes, we're going to make sure of that, yes.
Yeah, so the qualifications would be that the city has the right to reject all, any and all bids. I would also add that lessons learned from prior administrations, I think, reversionary language in any deed, that if somebody were to bid on this with the intentions of developing the property, we would have expectations of what the timeline for development would be, and if they're unsuccessful, that property would revert back to the city.
Did you read the last part, Mayor?
If the timeline for redevelopment or compliance is not met, that there would be a reversionary clause, so that the property would revert back to the city.
We don't have the authority, I assume the law prohibits even the city from stipulating the type of purchase buyer we would want? Do we have any control on that?
Well, I think we do in a way, by being able to reject all bids.
Okay.
But I.
But do, do we have to show clause, why we reject the bid?
No. Really? So I think we, we can have, we can do our due diligence.
Yes.
As long as we make it clear at the outset that we can reject all bids, then we can determine. And some, and sometimes it may not be that we can specify specifically why we want to do that.
No, we can do this negatively, but as long as we don't have to show clause, then.
No.
We're a pretty, no. Pretty strong hand.
All right, exactly, right.
Floor is still open, questions? I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving into item four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget modifications and transfer request for fiscal year 2021, as described in Controller's memo dated December 6, 2021.
I love it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette.
Second.
Second by Councilman Oliver. Floor is open for questions.
I want to make sure I know, it's just moving it from one account that's already been, just to where it needs to go to pay the bills.
Actually, this one is for close out year-end line items. So in those line items, where there may have been a surplus, off the top of my head, going through this one, salt, last year was a light year, we didn't use up all our salt. So being able to move those surplus funds to other line items where there may have been an overrun, or to capital reserve. And yeah, this is designed to close out year-end, these transfers are pre-audit. I see our comptroller is online, but she's working with the auditor with a goal to get that audit completed by December 31. And you'll see more of these transfers then. Other questions or comments on the transfers? Right, then I'll call the motion. I know, yes, well, as we start to head right into budget season, you'll probably see more of them than you want to see. So calling the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education Building Committee request to waive $1,224,841 in building permit fees for the Torrington High School middle school, should say, construction project. This was approved by the Board of Finance on November 16, 2021. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. I hear, I heard Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, the only thing I would add is, this is past practice, this has, this gets done on a regular basis, but nowhere did I find a policy, and there was protracted discussion on this, I think it might be worth, it's, it doesn't need to be a ordinance, but I do think it's worth having a policy, so any future construction projects, there will be a question as what, what practices or what protocols. So I will be working on that, and I'll bring it back to the council. All right, no questions, I'm going to call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Co-Memorial Park budgets, which have been approved by Parks and Rec Commission back in February of 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilman Menegia. Questions? And I'll just, for the newest members, co-memorial park budgets are budgets of trust funds outside of the tax-paid general fund. So this never goes to the Board of Finance, because they are trust funds, they, they stay right here with the council. Go ahead, question?
Yeah, so the, so the city manages the trust, essentially?
So the trust, the trust itself is managed by Torrington Savings Bank.
Yeah.
And there are quarterly distributions of PNI, that's principal and income, with a portion of any, any capital gains included in that PNI. Those funds are held here on the city side and expended strictly and solely for Co-Memorial Park. You see, the last couple of years, they invested heavily in Christmas lights, and we've, the gardeners are paid out of that fund, any equipment that's needed there, the electricity for the civic center, all of those expenses come out of this budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in the list dated December 6, 2021.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette.
Second.
Second by Councilman Waldron. Questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to release the sewer use liens in Corporation Counsel's memo dated December 6, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Menegia. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager and authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to negotiate an on-call service agreement with Silver Petricelli for the facility building condition assessment for multiple city facilities, as described in the bid documents, FRQ, CFA, 0268082321.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kevin.
Second.
And second by Councilman Oliver. Are there questions? Oh, he is here, you made it back, thank you. I have no questions, Mr. Kevin Arrow.
What was the criteria used for determining that Silver Petricelli was the best man for the job?
Do, can you come to the microphone and answer, please?
Can you, can you repeat that one more time?
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm Jamie Secor, Facilities Manager.
Thank you, okay, what was the process used to determine that this gentleman was the best man suited for the job?
We had a panel of myself, Ray Drew, Director of Public Works, and Paul Coons, who was the city engineer, and we based it on the best needs, a company that has the best local experience with the state, state guidelines, and also local utilities to decide what would be better fit for the city, so we had like a little grading sheet, we all graded independently of each other, then reviewed the scores, and they became the top between all three of us independently.
Okay, there were multiple applicants for this?
There were eight applicants total.
Right, and you rated all of them, or you did top four or something like that?
Yes, so we looked at the top eight, I'm sorry, we looked at all eight, got it down to the top three, and we interviewed those three, and then finalized the grade based on the interview, and Silver Petronelli was a top scorer between all three of us.
Very good, thank you, just wanted to know.
Other questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So item 10, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Second, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Wagner, or Rouette, sorry. Those W's will get me every time.
I'm an R.
I know you are. Waldron and Wagner always seem to move and second each other's motions. Calling, calling motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jamie, is there anything else that you wanted to add this evening? Right. To the screen.
Ray Drew.
So I see, yeah, Ray Drew. Anything to add this evening, Ray?
I would just like to congratulate you and the returning council members, and congratulate the two incoming new council members, and the Department of Public Works looks forward to working with you over the next several years. And if you ever need any questions, if you ever have any questions, or you ever need anything, please give us a call.
Thank you, Ray. And Robin was on the call, I don't, Robin, was there anything that you wanted to add tonight's, to tonight's discussion? Oh, you're muted.
She's on mute.
Oh, okay, I said I second what Ray said, so congratulations. And, no, I just want to thank you for approving the transfers. Yeah, Jen, you know, just standard year-end transfers to bring accounts that were under budget to a positive balance, and then to transfer the regular, the surpluses into the reserves.
Thank you.
So that should, that should be all that we have for last year. All right, and we are moving along with the audit, we may need, we may need an extension just to finalize everything at the beginning of January.
All right, I know that the last several years, we've had to do extensions, the audit includes city side and Board of Education's side, and it is complicated, so.
Yeah, we're close, but with the, with the transition and, and everything, it just took a little bit of extra time.
And transition on both sides, Board of Education has a new business director, the city has a new comptroller, Councilwoman Rouette has a question.
Through you, Mayor.
Yes.
I just, Robin, welcome, are you, is Alice still actually helping with the transition, or has she had her end date?
Alice is officially retired, yes, however, she has offered her assistance on an as-needed basis. And I'm thinking with the American Rescue Plan funds, there may be a need for consulting services, and she really would be perfect for bringing in for that purpose, sort of keep her arms-length all the time, or within arms-length, I should say. But Robin's doing a fantastic job, you know, what are we, six weeks into the, into the relationship here, and she hasn't bolted yet. Thank you. All right, any other questions for Robin? No? All right, I think that was, is that it on the call? I guess that's it. See a lot of Board of Ed and Building Committee members. All right, we'll move into item 11. Oh, Carol, sorry, Carol.
I'm always going to remember.
No news from the City Clerk's Department, other than my new assistant, Heather Abraham. She comes to the banking world and is super experienced in customer service, and you guys are her customers, so she can take care of you. Don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, and Corporation Counsel, anything?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, now we'll move into item 11, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
Councilman Waldron? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Starting from my left, Councilman Oliver.
Actually, I had something that I was hoping that you could add a little bit clarity to, Mayor. It's regarding the Christmas parade that is upcoming on Sunday, I was wondering if you could publicize that a little bit for our community at large.
Absolutely, yep.
Such a great event, such a great place.
Yes, so I'll let the council members go through, and then I'll.
Sure.
Report on all of that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kevin Arrow.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I'd like to welcome new council members to our August meetings, and please don't get used to the 30-minute duration of this meeting. You, you happen to luck out. But we welcome you and look forward to your input, thank you.
Councilwoman Rouette, why do I keep doing that?
I want to thank Vic, actually, for emceeing our.
Well, you're welcome.
Inauguration today.
Yeah. Jokes are great, yeah.
No, it's not only jokes, it's like that historical piece that I think Vic brings to, to the event.
That means I'm old. Is that what you're saying?
That means you're invaluable, invaluable.
I do, I think for Light Up Torrington, and, you know, I, I love the event, I'm so excited about it, I was very disappointed. I understand that there was reasons why the street was closed down, the state required it or something, closed down, but that was a disappointment. And I will really support the Recreation Department to get a new sound system.
Oh, yeah.
And my daughter-in-law, who works for Landmark Theater, made a really good recommendation that possibly we work with the Warner Theater, you know, their ideas about what would be the best in terms of having it for that event and many other events. Because I do think, you know, it really promotes Torrington, and we're recognizing the Torrington Health District. I felt like we needed to apologize to them for not having, you know, the event bigger for them in. Event bigger for them in their acknowledgement of lighting up the tree, but. I'm usually not one to be negative, but I love Torrington. I want it to be promoted. The best it possibly can, and if it requires a new sound system. You know, I'm pretty tight on budgets, but let's do it. Alright, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Manija.
Um, thank you. Um, well, I'm not used to thirty minute meetings either, Mr. Kevin Arrow. So, uh, yeah, so this is, uh, this is amazing, thirty minutes. I don't think I've ever seen a thirty minute meeting. Uh. I thank you to everybody for the welcome thoughts and I'm well, I'm looking forward to working with everybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Thank you. This was sold to me that it was going to be short meetings. They said it's not like we're asking you to run for Board of Ed. Many of you guys have been mentors to me for years, and and I really appreciate all of you answering my questions and listening to weeks prior to this meeting and tonight. Thank you. For that, I do look forward to working with all of you, and I was really stoked when I walked into the City Clerk's office. They handed my badge and Heather Abraham was working there, so. Um, I think she's going to be a great asset to the city and. She's going to learn a lot from Carol. Nice to see you.
Councilman Walton.
I just ditto and welcome to Armin and Carrie to. Our panel here and I think they'll add a lot. Their experience, so.
Alright, so I'll just add, I do have subcommittee appointments that I've finalized this afternoon. Um, I'll send you an email with your respective appointments. Um, I always try to get each one of you on two of the of the subcommittees. And then I usually look for one representative from the council, one R, one D to represent during the budget season. So you two can draw straws and. I'm gonna, I'm gonna appoint from the other four. We're heading.
You already said you really like.
Polly said that, yeah, I'm sure he did.
I do, not the committee ordinance, just regular ordinance, I mean, well, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, I'm one of those people that loves budget. I love those numbers. I do have a tendency to. Put more information before the councilmen, probably they even like to receive. Um, but I think that it is necessary. I will be working with Robin on a new budget presentation this year. Um, that I think will be a little more comprehensive. It'll go into a little more detail about what each department does. You know, and how many employees are in that department and all of that stuff. It's it's all in the budget if you ask for the detail. You know, but instead of being a six hundred page document, maybe we can get it down to a three hundred page document with more detail for all of you. So I'm looking forward to recrafting that. Christmas parade is on Sunday. Council members traditionally do march in that parade. It did get moved up this year. So, um. We have to check and tell you what time it is. This is a parade that starts at the Armory. It ends at Christmas Village. There are some opening ceremonies. Um, at the village, and then it's official for the next two weeks with Santa in town.
Isn't it like eleven?
Uh, yeah, usually.
Eleven AM.
Is that, is that what you just pulled up? Thank you. You're way ahead of me.
We get an invitation.
From the Armory to Christmas Village.
So, so Brett Simmons did send out information to the council members. Did you not receive from Brett Simmons?
No.
Okay, none of you? Oh.
Yeah, because we love using our.
Alright, so that's the other thing. And I noticed that Carrie and Armin didn't have an email yet.
The stuff this I know.
You got it? Okay, good, because I did send you some information about a CCN workshop coming up in January. You might want to, yeah. Um, I will make sure that Brett gets that invitation out. They are not doing the VIP night anymore. I know. Can you hear me? That VIP night made me laugh. It was supposed to be a shortened, sit on Santa's lap and assured and shorter wait. It was longer than if you just made a date at four o'clock in the afternoon, so. Um, because of COVID, they discontinued that this year. They also are not doing it, so whether that'll come back in the future, we're not sure. Um. We are finalizing, I'm working with Robin on finalizing the. Budget amendments for the current fiscal year, twenty twenty one through twenty twenty two. Uh, we learned in October that the Board of Education's request. For two percent of the ECS funding. Um, be paid directly to the Board of Education. This is a a claim under CGS. Ten dash two sixty two K was granted. This results in a five hundred thousand, four hundred and seventy eight thousand dollar deficit in our projected revenue column. So I'm working with Robin to strategize how we'll. Um, how we'll work through that. So the next meeting I hope to have before you, those final budget amendments.
Yeah, point of order. Uh, is that related to the Alliance identification? Is that outside of the?
It's outside of Alliance. So as you know, the Alliance District is also ECS money that gets paid directly to the Board of Education. That's four million dollars. It's three point nine plus. Um, this extra five hundred thousand dollars is a statute that went into effect back in nineteen ninety one. Um, I think it predates Alliance. Uh, I. I I kind of figured as an Alliance District that they wouldn't have afforded or awarded it, but. Um, Torrington is not the only municipality that has taken advantage of this. Uh, I did get confirmation that there were six other municipalities.
No, can I make a request? This is in line with, you know, my obligatory request every year to ask for more direct. Interaction with the Board of Education. I personally, I would like to have an agenda item at the next meeting. Maybe we can discuss how these funding streams. The difference between Alliance funding versus just straight ECS funding and how that impacts us. I think it would be good to have all these members of City Council on the same page so we understand that clearly. It can be very confusing in this then. Being in addition to and outside of, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
You know, going into the budget season, I think this would help us just an educational piece of. How this money is distributed from the state in these different.
Absolutely. So would you be comfortable waiting until January for that?
Yes.
December twenty.
Really what I'm asking.
Yes. Um, and I know that the Board of Education also wants to meet with council and planning and zoning. To go over some of the priorities and, you know, where we're going.
That's great.
Yes, yeah.
I think we all know, well, never mind. We all recognize now that there. So many of the issues facing the Board of Education are city issues and and it's very, very hard to to. You know, separate them out as it was thirty years ago, you know.
Yep, absolutely. So when I met with. Uh, Fiona Capabianca and John Kisco two weeks ago, this was something that we had discussed. Uh, along the same lines, getting back to a discussion we started. Prior to the pandemic about doing a citywide summit. Bringing all of those respective boards, you know, it's Board of Safety as much as it is planning and zoning and City Council and. Um, and just maybe starting with our plan of conservation and development. You know, looking at that through the various boards' lenses. And making sure that whatever is in that plan, which is our guiding document on development. Um, really does truly reflect where we all want to be.
Were you going to try to have that summit prior to the budget season?
No, I'm thinking that's a larger, uh, longer term that will probably change. Um, I shouldn't say probably change. I don't know. It may change. Uh, the plan of conservation and development, you know, where we have, uh, you know, a higher density housing overlays. You know, where we have, uh, you know, future subdivision potential. You know, how does that impact public safety? How does that impact Board of Education? How does that impact the city, the taxpayers?
Clearly.
Yeah, so that I'm thinking is a longer protracted conversation, but your conversation specific to budgeting and that I see.
That is informational so that members of the council can understand what, when people are talking about how these revenue streams end up. In the general versus the, you know, Board of Ed, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
As an Alliance, not, just clarify that for this group at least.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think the Board of Finance understands it because they're the ones that make those final decisions. But you're right, for decisions that are being made by the city budgetarily, it is. Probably best for us to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um. I guess that was it. That's all that I have on my talking points. Um, so. There are no questions for me. I'm going to move into item twelve, open the meeting to public comment for agenda items only. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walden. And second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we're open to the public again. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board on agenda items? Seeing and hearing none, I am going to move into thirteen. There being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Councilman Oliver, second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five.
Not a bad minute.
How much knitting that done?
Thank you all.
How much knitting that done?
What are you making?